I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council and it will be a public hearing. It's Monday, September 23rd, 2019. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to provide input and comments concerning a proposed annexation agreement between the city -- oops, I need to call to order this public hearing. Jump the gun. I'd like to call this hearing to order and will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Here.
Hayson?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Is there public input before we go on to the hearing? Okay. I'll start over. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to provide input and comments concerning a proposed annexation agreement between the city of Urbana and Henry Merklo. The proposed annexation agreement is for attractive land consisting of approximately 1.01 acres and generally located east of North Smith Road and north of University Avenue. The property is commonly referred to as 2218 East University Avenue and has a permanent index number of 302110351016. Notice of the public hearing was published on July 24th, 2019. I now declare this public hearing open. If anyone desires to express their views regarding the proposed annexation agreement, please come forward and be recognized. Well, thank you. Seeing that there are no comments at this time, I now declare the public hearing continued to December 9th, 2019. With no further business before this meeting, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. Tonight, a City Council Committee of the Whole meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmembers Brown?
Here.
Hayson?
Here.
Here.
Percy?
Here.
We're married?
Long day.
Jacobson?
I'm here too.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
All right. The first item on our agenda is approval of minutes from the previous meeting from August 26th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval of those minutes.
A second?
Second.
Moved by Miller, seconded by Jacobson. Are there any discussion corrections? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight? Nope? Okay. So, we're going to get started with some presentations. The first presentation this evening is for LGBTQ and Pride Week by the mayor.
Point of order, I think there was some communications back and forth that suggested we might move public input before the presentations, even though they're reversed on the agenda because they usually are, and I believe this may have been a glitch.
Is there a desire to change the agenda before we move forward?
Do you have a public input on something besides the text amendment?
At the moment, I have one public input card and it looks like a couple of people are filling them out. Would anybody else like to address the Committee of the Whole this evening? Okay, so right now, we have one from -- we only have one. We can move it forward if you'd like.
It doesn't matter. I somehow got the impression from communications offline that there were -- there might be some person or persons who wanted to do public input earlier, but I'm good.
Okay. All right. So, let's move on to presentations. Madam Mayor.
So, we have a proclamation tonight. Here, Robert. With me tonight are Robert Michael Doyle and Darlene Kleppel, County Executive.
This is a proclamation by the mayors of the cities of Champaign and Urbana, Illinois, and the county executive of Champaign County. Whereas in 1969, an event referred to as the Stonewall uprising began the national movement and the modern fight for LGBTQ plus rights, which has since spread throughout the world over the past 50 years. And whereas in 1970, LGBTQ plus events began in the United States to commemorate the anniversary of Stonewall, including being recognized in Champaign County in the late 1970s. And whereas, since in 1975, the cities of Urbana and Champaign have been on the forefront, both in the state of Illinois and nationwide, of protecting LGBTQ plus individuals' rights by prohibiting the discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas, the cities of Champaign and Urbana and the county of Champaign have a rich and diverse history of LGBTQ plus representation in our government leaders, staff, and citizens. And whereas, the uniting Pride Up Center of Champaign County was founded in 2009 as an organization to advocate for the equality, wellness, advocacy, and visibility of the LGBTQ plus communities in Champaign County. And whereas, on September 27th through 29th, 2019, Champaign-Urbana's 10th Annual Pride Fest and Parade will be held in downtown Champaign. Now, therefore, we, Deborah Frank Finan and Diane Wolf Marlin, mayors of the cities of Champaign and Urbana, Illinois, and Darlene Kleppel, Champaign County Executive, do hereby proclaim the week of September 22nd through 29th, 2019, as LGBTQ plus Pride Week in the cities of Champaign and Urbana, Illinois, and the county of Champaign, Illinois.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, both of you.
And I would just like to recognize Robert Michael Doyle for his leadership in this area. Thirty years ago this year was when he brought the first proclamation to the mayors of Urbana and Champaign. And at that time, Mayor Markland of Urbana and Mayor McCollum of Champaign both issued the proclamation. And so, between then and now, he has been a leader in advocating for the rights of everyone in our community. And so, we very much thank you for that.
Thank you both for the proclamation.
Thank you.
All right. Before we get started with the other two presentations, I would like to say, the first one is the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment for the non-medical cannabis. This is currently still at the Planning Commission. So, tonight is just a presentation from staff as well as some additional information that occurred during the Planning Commission. So, this is a technical questions. It's an informational session. It is not up for discussion at this time because we don't have a recommendation from the Planning Commission. So, with that, Community Development.
Good evening. Thank you for the introduction that keeps me from having to give that same introduction. So, thanks. So, as you'll all recall, I think, so, non-medical adult-use cannabis will be legal in the state of Illinois on January 1st. On the third of this month, City Council passed the cannabis retailer's tax. So, on cannabis retail, so the question, so one of the big questions at hand is where these cannabis businesses can go. So, the proposed text amendment that we brought to Plan Commission is really to define cannabis uses or cannabis businesses to and to set out rules for where they can go. So, my presentation tonight, I'll try and keep it brief. So, I'll explain really the basics of those, the proposed zoning regulations that we brought to Plan Commission, and then go through some of Plan Commission's main questions and then the further research that they asked us to do. I do want to point out, before we get too far into it, in this proposed text amendment, we're not considering sort of smoking lounges or onsite consumption businesses at this point. So, those are not, are not part of this text amendment. So, for the proposed text amendment, really, it's got three parts. So, we outline definitions for medical or non-medical cannabis, and then lay out distance requirements which mirror what the state requirements are, and then the zoning districts that they would be allowed in. The state act that legalized non-medical cannabis allows for municipalities to regulate the time, place, manner, and number of cannabis business establishments, including distances from sensitive uses. So, just real quickly, the definitions for cannabis businesses, the state outlines six of them. In the proposed text amendment, we're just, we're proposing one blanket definition that will include all six of the different types of business. So, that'll keep things cleaner and also keep us in lockstep with the state. So, we don't have to redefine those businesses that they've already defined. So, those business types are craft growers, which are smaller-scale facilities. So, these are initially up to 5,000 square feet. They can, over time, increase up to 14,000 square feet. So, they're still relatively small. And these are growers that can grow, process, and package cannabis for sale at dispensaries or to processors. They can also share premises with dispensaries or processors. Cultivation centers are larger-scale growing facilities. Those can be up to just under five acres of what's called canopy space. So, that is cannabis in the flowering stage. And these cultivation centers grow cannabis, process it, and transport it to other cannabis businesses. Dispensaries are the retail arms. So, those are the ones that sell cannabis, cannabis-infused products, cannabis seeds and paraphernalia. Infusers make cannabis-infused products like oils, tinctures, food, and beverages. Processors extract chemicals or compounds from cannabis to produce cannabis concentrate or cannabis products. And transporters are businesses that are dedicated transport businesses for cannabis. I do want to note that in smaller or in less densely populated areas like Champaign-Urbana, cannabis businesses can transport their products up to 15 miles. So, we might see less demand for dedicated transporter businesses. But that doesn't mean that we couldn't have some businesses here that want to export to other parts of the state. So, we might see some transporters eventually. In terms of the, what we are proposing for distance requirements, as I said, the requirements would mirror what is in the state act. That's the same approach we took for medical cannabis. And I learned today in doing some more research, that's what our liquor requirements are based on. It goes back to the state requirements. So, the distance, the distances that the state requires are just for dispensaries and craft growers. And they say that no dispensary can be located on a parcel within 1,500 feet of the property line of a pre-existing dispensary. They also say that no craft grower can be located on a parcel within 1,500 feet of another craft grower or cultivation center. So, that, as I said, that's the minimum state requirement and that's what we discussed at the Plan Commission as well. Regarding the proposed districts, so, okay. So, essentially, we're proposing that craft growers, dispensaries, and infusers could be located sort of in the higher business districts, so not your neighborhood business districts essentially. So, the higher business districts and then in industrial areas. We're proposing cultivation centers as a conditional use in the agricultural district and as permitted uses in the industrial, in the two industrial zones. And that's really because cultivation centers are more akin to an industrial use. Oftentimes, they're really large indoor growing facilities. They're more akin to industrial uses than, say, your traditional agricultural use. So, that's why we're proposing them permitted in industrial but as a conditional use in agriculture. And then processors and transporters, we're proposing as permitted uses in the industrial zones only. This is, it's, these are similar to how we regulate existing medical cannabis cultivation and dispensaries as far as the table of uses. Also, I did look earlier today, and so I looked at where we allow liquor stores. Liquor stores are allowed as a conditional use permit in one of our, in B2, which is one of our neighborhood business districts, and then in the four higher business zones. So, our proposal would pretty much go along with that. So, at the Plan Commission, most of the conversation was concerned with the distance requirements from, for dispensaries from sensitive uses, and then for cultivation centers from residential uses. Plan Commission asked staff to sort of examine first our liquor regulations, which, as I mentioned a couple of times, I started doing, to look at the distances for liquor stores and look at buffers for dispensaries from K through 12 schools. And then for cultivation centers and craft growers, they wanted us to look at potential buffers from residential uses, the concern there being that these large facilities can have an odor coming off of them. So, I've been looking into these. I will present more information to the Plan Commission at their meeting on October 10th. Plan Commission did have some other sort of questions but not, that weren't as big of concerns, like can you allow drive-through dispensaries? You can't. And they wanted to know how many dispensaries would be allowed in the region. I did some math. I think it's six or seven, but in the, so that's in the entire Champaign-Urbana area. But I want to make sure those numbers are correct before I state that for certain. That really wraps up my brief report here, but I can take any questions or what have you.
Does anybody have any technical questions? Eric?
Is it envisaged that the marijuana will be grown outdoors or inside?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, we met with a representative from NewMed, who is the, our current medical dispensary in town here. And they said that you can get six more times the yield or six more crops during the year than you, growing indoors than outdoors. So, I imagine most of the growing would be indoor.
And you said that this ordinance doesn't cover smoking lounges or consumption in public. How will it interact with our smoking ordinance? Will there be those prohibitions, prohibitations, whatever that word is?
So, I will admit to being unfamiliar with our smoking ordinance, but the act does prohibit smoking everywhere that the Smoke Free Illinois Act prohibits smoking.
Yeah. Public spaces, restaurants.
Yeah. Anywhere, I think.
Hotel rooms.
It's anywhere that you could be reasonably thought to be observed by another member of the public, so.
And I have a second question too, but Mayor, go ahead. You have a question about that?
Wait a second. Sherice had a question first.
Just to clear. I think it's a clarification.
Oh, you want to clarify something? Okay.
There's been some questions about the relationship between the Smoke Free Act and the new Adult Use Cannabis Act. And the legislation itself has some conflicting language. So, the last word we got at the end of last week is that they'll probably do a trailer bill to clarify, but the intent was not to override anything that's contained in the Smoke Free Act. But the legislation itself wasn't as clear as it should have been. So, they're going to be rewriting the language.
Okay, thanks. And I had another question too. Can I do a second question?
Let's let Sherice go.
Yes.
Okay, Sherice.
All I wanted was if you could repeat the categories again so that I can understand.
Sure. All the six business types?
Yeah, the six business types.
See if I can do it by memory. Okay. So, you have craft growers.
Uh huh. And what do they do?
So, they grow, those are smaller scale. They, I think the intent might be so that they can partner with a dispensary. So, you can have like a small grower and a dispensary. They allow co-location of those facilities. But it's 5,000 to 14,000 square feet of growing.
So, that, you think that that's basically so that somebody can grow on site?
It seems like that's what they're going for, yeah.
Okay. What's the next one?
Cultivation centers, which are the big cultivators. So, that's almost five acres of crop that they can have. Dispensaries, which is the retail sales part of it. Infusers, I mean, they take cannabis and make things like oils or baked goods or beverages.
Okay. So, that's like the brownie, is this where the edibles would come from?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So, but now, are, is the infuser different, the infuser business type thing? Because I know, understand that like infusing, for example, if you're making brownies, you actually infuse the butter. Okay? So, and no, I don't do that. I just know people who did. Anyway, California was legal. But what I want to, what I want to understand is that, is there like an off-site place where, for example, they would have the product and the butter and they infuse it and then somebody buys the butter or the oils or whatever? I guess that's what I want to understand. When you infuse, when you infuse something, like you'd have olive oil, I guess, I guess you would put the, you know, if you're going to make special oils or something like that, is there just like an off-site place where that's all that happens is the infusing of oils and butters and fats or whatever?
I think if that's, you know, if that's the business model they wanted to do, if you just wanted to make butter and oil, I guess you'd get an infuser license and do that.
Okay. So, it is off-site from, for example, the people who would actually be making or selling, no, I want to say making, even baked goods or such.
Yeah. So, I think I follow where you're.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think I follow your logic. I maybe, I don't know. It sounds like you're talking about a multi-infuser setup where you'd have one infuser making the butter and another infuser baking the goods.
Right.
So, I think both would have to be licensed as infusers.
So, would it be like a bakery can get, goes to the infuser site to get whatever they want to make what they're, make the edible? Or would all of that be something that's made in one location? Would all that be in one location?
I guess it could be both, but I will say that whatever the end product is will still have to be sold through a dispensary.
Okay.
I think Jim wanted to add something?
Hopefully, I can clarify this. There was an excellent presentation last Thursday at the IML Annual Conference, the attorney's part of, Thursday's the attorney's part. And there was a terrific presentation at which somebody, you know, an attorney who's an expert in this area, as well as an attorney who is employed by a dispensary, they also happen to be a cultivator, and they kind of walked through the process. An infuser can be anyone who wants to take the cannabis product and combine it with anything else. It could be made into an oil. It could be a lotion. It could be food product, what have you. It's whatever the, that company wants to do with its infuser license. The product that's infused, it's not like the old days with Alis B. Toklis brownies. It's highly, just putting cannabis leaf or flower in brownies. It is highly regulated. Infusers, when they infuse, create an oil, they have to indicate how much THC or active ingredient is in that. It's just not, let's put some of this stuff in this olive oil or whatever, or this lotion. Highly, highly regulated. Tons of reporting to the state, inspections by the Illinois State Police. So, it's not kind of a free-for-all. It's a regular, very, very difficult business model for each of these types of growers and infusers and transporters and dispensaries.
Okay. That helps. Okay. So, we got craft growers, cultivation, dispensaries, infusers, transporters, they move the product.
Yeah, and processors.
And processors. Now, what do processors do?
So, I'll just, I'll just read this verbatim here.
Thank you.
It is a facility operated by an organization or business that is licensed by the Department of Agriculture to either extract constituent chemicals or compounds to produce cannabis concentrate or incorporate cannabis or cannabis concentrate into a product formulation to produce a cannabis product.
Okay. That was.
So, sorry, I was laughing because that was a lot of, seemed like a lot of C sounds in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, they extract chemicals from the cannabis or compounds from the cannabis to create concentrates or.
So, these places would basically, they're like chemists. They would basically take the cannabis and let's say they just wanted to go for the THC in it and that's it. Or maybe they want to go for some other chemical that, you know, helps your blood thin out or something and they just take that.
Yeah.
From the cannabis. Okay. Okay. That helps. Thank you.
Dennis?
I was asking about the number of square feet allowed for craft growers. It's a small-scale growing facilities. It says up to 5,000 square feet, not 5,000 square feet or higher. So, if I wanted to become a craft grower in my basement, I could do that?
No. Unless, I mean, if your basement were zoned, were zoned one of the zones that it would be allowed in and you got a license from the state and met all the regulations, then perhaps. But there would be no homegrowing.
Expected because.
There actually is no homegrowing allowed for non-medical cannabis.
No homegrowing allowed?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's the difference. And so, yes, you'd have to be in a B3, 4, or industrial zoning district, but there are some houses that are in these districts. I just was wondering.
Yeah. It might be tough to retrofit them, to make them meet the state's requirements, but suppose if you have enough money.
Where there's a will, there's a way. Okay. But it's anything that's below 5,000 square feet.
Sure. And like I said, over time, if you meet certain, if you jump through certain hoops and prove that you're a responsible craft grower, that can, that number can raise in increments of 3,000 square feet up to 14,000 square feet.
Okay.
Eventually.
And these people would have to get a license?
Correct.
And who gives the license to them?
The Department of Agriculture.
So, it's not the, it's not our local government. It's a state organization?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim, did you want to clarify something?
Yes. As I recall the act, I think an individual in their home can grow up to four plants without.
I think that's only for medical.
Right now, medical use. But the legislation they're contemplating expanding, including that and the trailer bill too, whether they do it or not. The one thing you have to remember about this industry. The one thing you have to remember about this industry, the way Illinois has structured it, and it is a truly model act compared to just about every other state that's legalized it, because we are the only state that's legalized it through legislation rather than referendum and then imposing it on a state to go ahead and regulate. It is a very highly regulated industry. From the moment I was explaining to Bill that literally from the moment you have a seed that you're going to plant, it gets an identification number. And every plant and all the, whatever comes off the plant, the leaves, the flowers, the stems, whatever's there, and the propagation of the plants, they're given ID numbers based on that ID number. And that tracks all the way through from the grower, whatever the type of grower, the infuser, the processor, the dispensary, the transportation company, et cetera. And that's the model that is present in the medical and it's going to apparently continue for the recreational. So, it can be inventoried. And the Illinois State Police inspect these various facilities on a regular basis and they're not like our typical liquor inspections where they may walk in and look around for 20 minutes to a half hour. These inspections can go on for four to six hours, as it was reported by this individual who works for one of these dispensaries and growers up in the Chicago and beyond area. The other thing about this statute, it is strictly intra-state. There will be no shipment of cannabis beyond the state. There will be no bringing cannabis into the state because then you get into interstate commerce and federal law applies. Non-residents will be able to come in and buy half the amount of cannabis that an Illinois resident, I think it's 30 grams, but there are so many grams or however oils are measured, but it's all specified in the statute. Non-residents can purchase half that amount. The act unfortunately doesn't talk about what happens when somebody from Indiana comes in and buys half the amount and then transports it across state lines into Indiana. I guess that's their problem because they have to deal with Indiana law that apparent, that has yet to legalize cannabis.
Eric?
So, I've been doing a little quick research and, and according to what I'm reading, the legislation does provide an exemption to the Smoke Free Environment Act, which, maybe that was in what you said, but I didn't quite get it. So, there is a question that we ought to be very, I think, very explicit about, and that is, do we wish to specifically allow cannabis lounges? And, and because we can't, the legislation apparently permits that. And, and, and that's probably a pretty big question because this becomes an economic development issue as well as a, because apparently, again, what I'm reading is that nationally there's a pretty big desire or, you know, potentially a big demand, you know, once cannabis is legalized, there's a pretty big demand for public places or clubs where people can go and get high together or at least, you know, use cannabis together.
So, just a point of clarification, our zoning law, would that cover such a business?
No, it would not.
Because it's a certain kind of business.
Yeah, so, and I wasn't, maybe I wasn't so explicit upfront on this. So, the law, the law does allow that exemption from the Smoke Free Illinois Act if you choose to take it. So, if we wanted to decide where those businesses should be located and how we would want to allow those, we could do that. But without, until we actually do that, it would be, the Smoke Free Illinois Act would cover everything. And we're not, we're not trying to tackle that issue at this point because that's probably a larger conversation. And as the mayor said earlier, there's a trailer bill expected to clarify some unclear language in the act regarding those, those lounge-type uses. So, I think our, our perspective is let's wait until that additional guidance comes out. But since folks need to get their business license applications into the state pretty soon, we wanted to make sure that we had some rules on the books for, for these other uses.
So, do we expect the trailer bill to come during this veto session, to be actually passed? Mayor?
Heather Steens is working on it, I think. So, yeah, I think we should see it pretty quickly. It's exactly that exception that you mentioned that they're, they're trying to fix. It was unintended, so.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, that would be something that would have to come through as a zoning change. So, if we do decide, if the city decides to look into that further, we would see another zoning amendment?
Yeah, that's, right, that's how we would do it.
Okay, all right. Dean?
I just wanted to clear the fog on one issue that I think we've kind of blended together here. The, the clubs that we speak about, the lounges are typically private membership only when you look at other cities. You have to pay to be a member, they have their own criteria. You know, you've got to be more than five foot two to get in or whatever, but whatever their criteria is. So, that's, that's very different than having a public place for people to smoke in because you'd have to go out of your way to pay for a membership and go there and all that stuff. And the concern that I've been getting from my constituents is the public place part, which is separate again, because they don't want to be exposed to the secondhand smoke or have their children exposed to it. There's also been, I've had people ask me questions, my constituents have asked me, you know, could, could you accidentally be standing next to somebody smoking it at a bar or a concert and then later get drug tested at work and show positive and you're, you know, I'm sure that's a little bit paranoid, but those are the kinds of concerns that are coming up. So, I just wanted to separate that from the private lounges, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, and, and thank you for, for all those points. Yeah, so the act, the act is very clear that smoking in public places is not allowed. So, smoking on the street, smoking at, you know, at a concert that's open to the public or what have you, actually smoking, even if it's in a private club or something, as we were just talking about, until we actually address that issue would be, would be illegal. So, I, so the, the concern about public smoking is, it should be no greater than what it is currently because people shouldn't be smoking it anywhere currently.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Bill?
I had two things. One, on, as far as the odor goes, I know we have a noise ordinance in our nuisance part of our city code. I don't remember seeing anything on odors. So, is there a complaint mechanism we have for odor emissions from businesses, whether it's a barbecue place or a marijuana processing place?
Right, and this is admittedly not an area that I'm expert in. I believe that what we do is, is we ask our nuisance or our code compliance officer, I can't remember his current title now, I think it was just switched, but we would ask him to investigate and I, I believe he kicks that to the Illinois EPA if it is an odor issue. I don't think we have anything on the books that's specific about odors.
There may not be anything on the, in the Illinois EPA laws that would cover odor emissions from marijuana places. So, that might be something we'd consider looking into. As far as, it seems like there's also some overlap between processors and infusers. Is that, is that true? I mean, processors, it says, one of the things they can do is incorporate any of the products into another product and that's kind of what infusers do. So, it seems, I'm a little confused how we would decide where to have those. I mean, it sounds like currently the proposal is to have them be in different zoning districts and the processors be in industrial and infusers could be in the more business districts. Is it more a matter of scale or is there actually differences in the businesses that have a greater impact on their neighbors?
Yeah, I, I think it's more a matter of scale and if you notice, I don't know if you have the plan commission memo in front of you.
Not in front of me, but.
But for infusers, we were proposing that in downtown and in the B3 U District, we were proposing that those only be allowed in smaller buildings, so 3,500 square feet or less, because we wouldn't want to see something that's more industrial. You wouldn't want to see a 10,000 square foot infuser right downtown. So, we were trying to get at the, the scale through those regulations.
Could you have a small-scale processor?
I suppose you could, but I'm not sure. So, the thinking is sort of that the processor seems to be more of an industrial type, type business, whereas an infuser might be making edible things like cakes and, well, I don't know about cakes, but whatever edibles there are. I'm not an expert. But the, the processor seems to be making concentrated cannabis products that aren't, I don't know, just something about that seems more of an industrial use. But I can, I can look into, into that question and find out what the real difference is.
Bill, I got the idea that a processor actually removes the chemical components that make up marijuana or has, has the capability of doing that, whereas infusers or, the difference is basically that the, the infusers make edibles, make, or, or prepare foodstuffs or oils or stuff like that for immediate consumption. They don't, it doesn't need to be processed. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think so.
In the sense that, you know, there aren't the little glass tubes.
Maybe the extraction of the THC or whatever is a more.
That's, that's the idea I got. The difference between processors and infusers.
More industrial operation.
Yeah, and I just, I just noticed one key difference is that infusers' products are not intended to be smoked. And I think that processors create concentrated versions of cannabis that are intended to be smoked.
Okay, and then I guess as far as scale goes on, on transporters, could someone be a transporter and just have a van? I mean, is that something you would, or is this, are we talking about semi-truck loads?
Yeah, I haven't read the, the regulations for, for all of these business types, but I, I imagine it will be something that's pretty secure and substantial, so I know, I know.
Similar to warehouse sort of operations, maybe?
Yeah.
A secure warehouse, okay. I think that's, that's the only questions I had for now.
Jim, did you have something you wanted to add?
Getting back to the clubs, the city would have the authority to ban cannabis clubs. Can't ban recreational use of cannabis as long as it's done consistent with the statute, but the city does not have to allow for cannabis clubs. From a more practical standpoint, and again, talking with the attorney who worked for one of these organizations, she indicated that cannabis clubs are not, they're not even thinking about cannabis clubs on the near horizon because unlike bars, restaurants that obtain dram shop insurance, at this point, no insurance carrier is writing dram shop or cannabis consumption insurance for these facilities. And the other thing is the clubs will not be licensed to in any way sell cannabis in any form. Dispensaries are. The other thing is you should look at what is involved in walking in a dispensary. It's quite a thing, at least for the medical. You walk in, it's an enclosed area, there's a window, kind of like our police window here, what, and, and they anticipate the process being the same for recreational. The individual user has to show his or her ID, government ID, photo ID, and the prescription card. They have to match. Then they go into the state database and they have to match what's in the state database. Once they clear that form of security, they walk into an area that's kind of like a jewelry showroom, typically smaller, and there'll be their packets or vials or some kind of containers with cannabis labels on them. There is no cannabis in those packets or vials or containers. They're just merely descriptive. Once somebody selects what they want, then an employee goes into a vault, which is controlled with a passcode or a card. They go into the vault and they extract the amount and whatever the grade or grain of, however they label the cannabis, and bring it. They're, they're going to be setting up like ATM or debit situation so people do not have to come onto the property with large amounts of cash. Because for the recreational, there'll be a 40% plus tax overall between all the units, including the state that have the authority to tax recreational cannabis. They're very worried about people having cash walking onto these premises and who knows what's circulating around, waiting for them to walk in with, you know, get out of their cars with large sums of cash. And obviously, there's inventory control, very precise inventory control. Cash is not in the little, I'll call it jury, jewelry casement area. Again, that's all in the vault and all of this is inventoried on an extremely regulated basis and the inventory control is tied in with state computers. It's really a fascinating industry if you really look into it.
Dennis?
When NewMed opened, city council members toured it and indeed, it's not a casual experience to go in and to look at the materials that they have. And it might be really an excellent idea to do a walkthrough of NewMed if the city council wanted to do that because you could really get a sense of exactly what our attorney is telling us right now about how very controlled substance dispensation is. If it's going to be the same model, it's going to be kind of a challenge to go in there and get your, get your party materials.
Diane?
We've, we've talked with the owner of NewMed. He's willing to give council members a tour. Logistically, it's going to be a challenge, though, so we'll figure out how to do it, but it's not just a matter of everyone going in and walking around. You can't do that, so we'll have to figure it out.
Dean?
I guess my question's for Jim. How are they accepting debit or bank cards with it being illegal federally?
That's been a challenge, but there are a couple of banks, state banks in the state of Illinois that are doing business financially with the cannabis industry. Our dispensary here, NewMed, which the mayor referenced, current dispensaries obviously will automatically receive a license for recreational, plus if they want, and NewMed wants, can apply for a second license for the recreational. There's some dispute within the industry, not dispute, it's just business model question in terms of how are they going to separate medicinal cannabis acquisition because there are HIPAA requirements, they apply to that, too, because it's a prescribed medication versus recreational. Some are going to co-mingle but have patient counseling rooms, some are going to have completely, you know, separate entries and divide up. Now, they may have the same vaults and all that, but in terms of the retail experience to the customer or the patient, they'll be separated, again, for HIPAA. Some of this needs to be worked out and they're working it out very quickly.
Bill?
As far as the future dispensaries, I mean, NewMed will automatically be able to get one January 1st, right? Or thereabouts?
Yeah, as long as they get their application in and all.
Okay, and then for future dispensaries, what, at what point do they come in? March or June or something like that?
I'd, I'd have to look at the, the dates, but I think it's just one, there's one additional one, I think, through the end of 2021 and then it, it ramps up over the next year or two. And then, yeah.
And then for the social equity component of it, I read a little bit in the bill about that. It seemed like as long as you had 51% of the ownership or 51% of the employees that were from a disproportionately impacted area or, or one of the other qualifications, then you could get an extra 20 point, 20% score basically on your application and that would give you. that would give you your social equity points, basically. And from looking at the way they described it, it looked like pretty much every census tract in Urbana would qualify because of our poverty rate, partly because of the student population and partly the way the census tracts are drawn. So from my reading, it seems like anybody that lived in Urbana that wanted to own 51% could get that extra equity points.
Other questions? Dean?
Just one last one, it's more of a comment. I'm curious to see...
Ah, ah, no comments, only questions for staff.
Sorry.
Phrase it in a question like Jeopardy.
Just raise your voice at the end of the statement.
I started with "how," damn it. How is it going to impact our industry if something major happens with a ban on vaping, like some executive order or something that bans vaping? Is that going to apply to our cannabis shops?
I don't know.
That was my question. Thank you.
That was my answer.
All right, well, I have two or three questions for staff. My first question is, I'd like to hear the thought process behind having a conditional use permit instead of a special use permit?
For?
For, I believe, cultivation centers, the, the items that basically, I'm trying to think here, which ones would require a conditional use versus a by right?
So, yeah, so as, as currently proposed, it would just be the cultivation centers in the agricultural district. And I, I touched on the thinking a little bit, but essentially, the, you know, the agriculture district is for what we consider as traditional fields of corn and, and other, other agricultural products. And as I, as I stated earlier, the cultivation centers are usually more indoor growing facilities, so they're more, they look more at home in an industrial area than they would in an agricultural area. And we don't expect a lot of people to be growing outside, which would probably fit more into an agricultural area. But we wouldn't want to ban them outright and just say, no, none in the agricultural zone, but we might want to give a little bit more scrutiny to ones in the agricultural zones, just so that we know that it would actually fit in with the rest of the district.
So if, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, conditional use permits only go to the zoning board of review. They are not up for review to the city council. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Special use permits come to city council?
That is correct.
All right, so why would city council not be interested in approving these?
Yes, I believe city council may be, but the state act only specifies that municipalities can use conditional use permits for part of the zoning authorities, so they don't specify special use permits, so...
But because they don't specify, does that mean that we can't implement that?
Our initial, so Kurt Borman of our legal division, his, his interpretation was, or his, his recommendation was, the state says conditional use permits, let's use, or let's only say conditional use permits. We can certainly look more into it, see if there's some, you know, to see if maybe special use permits could be allowed, but it very specifically just says conditional use permits.
And I guess that's the broader question. So the state specifically says that we cannot make more restrictive, right? So I think the example you used in the planning commission documents, is it from, is it 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM that dispensaries are allowed to operate? And we could not change that from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, for example?
Right.
So, I mean, that kind of begs the question a little bit of what can local entities regulate? Obviously, we control zoning in terms of where things can be, so that's kind of obvious in that case. I would like for, for legal to investigate the difference between the special and the conditional use permit. I won't give my side on that. I'd just like more information on that. We already talked about, oh, I'm wondering if the mayor or legal has a list that perhaps you could share with city council in terms of the items that you think would be proposed on this trailer? Just so we would know what items that, to the best of your knowledge, they're going to try and fix.
We can try to find from the state.
Thank you.
We don't know yet.
Sure. We don't have the trailer yet, but it would, it would be good to know what, what the state is thinking about.
Yep, that's for sure.
All right, I, I think that's all the questions I have for now. I'm sure there'll be other questions when this comes back. One final round. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Jared, you didn't speak. Do you have any questions? No? All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
All right, next up on the agenda is Sister Cities update from council member Dennis Roberts.
Hey, everybody. Hello. Let me see if I can get this thing working. I made a... Okay, thanks. Then I can, okay, we'll see. All right, so, starting with this, I just wanted to update you on some of the activities of our Sister City program. We have had a friendship with Sister City, partnership with Malawi for a long time, since 2008. And every once in a while, we used to go because we had grants, we had funding to go, and we were doing projects in Malawi. Those grants are finished, and the most current grant that's going on right now in Malawi that has anything to do with this area is being conducted by the university. But we still have, you know, people who are interested and have connections in Malawi. Certainly, I'm one. I've been there about four or five times now, and we have friendships that have been created. And we know that two individuals who we've known for a long time will be coming to visit in our area probably next year in February. So we continue to have interactions and programs related to the Sister City in Africa. Just for your information, Africa is a big place, but Malawi is in the southeast-central part of the state, or the nation, or the continent, I'll say. And it's, it's not on the coastline, but it has a beautiful lake called Lake Malawi. And we are Sister City with the city of Zomba, which is in the southern district. And these are just photographs of earlier integrations and, and visits that we've had with people from Malawi, from Zomba. And we've recently produced a book celebrating 10 years of activities in our Sister City program. This year, some of the people that have been in our committee locally are busy doing other things in their lives, but I've had long conversations with friends of mine from Lisle, Lisle, Illinois, and they said that they would really like to come next time I ever went. And so this year, Bob and Sharon Breen accompanied me to Malawi. And the Brines established, own and operate a very successful Montessori school in the Lisle Naperville area. One of the projects that they really were interested in was educational support for the schoolchildren, because they have a school themselves, and they collected from parents and their students donations which filled four bins, each weighing about 50 pounds, which we carried to deliver to the schools in Malawi as part of our project. We arrived at Kamwuzu International Airport after flying 22 hours and 20 minutes. We stopped in Ethiopia and had a, we actually were not sure that we could land because there were demonstrations, having, Malawi having had a, one of its national elections in the recent times, there was a lot of concern about whether the elections were legitimate by some groups, and there were demonstrations which were scheduled for the weekend that we landed, that were intended to, to close the airports and all transportation hubs. But luckily, the Supreme Court in Malawi gave a moratorium to the demonstrations and we were able to land. One of the first people that we met and interacted with is Charles Colomba. When we began our first Sister City grant, he was the CEO of Zomba. We found him to be an intelligent, smart man with a lot of savvy. He has advanced degrees from the UK, and he has now advanced his career, and he is now one of the ministers of government in the capital. He is the minister which oversees all of the city councils and their activities in the entire nation, and he also handles rural development issues. So he's still a friend of ours, and we were anxious to meet him and connect with him because he's still going to be an important person in Malawi. The second individual that we met in the capital was Musa Mawali. Musa was the, was the CEO's right-hand man, we would call him desk sergeant or administrative assistant. Musa's been that in Zomba for all the time that we've ever worked in Malawi, except for this last year. He was recruited by, by the city government in the capital city, and he's now doing the same job in the capital city of La Longue. So we stopped to meet him. Of course, we were invited to both of these people's homes for dinner each night that we were in La Longue. And Musa works at the city offices in the capital city, and he introduced us to the deputy mayor as the mayor herself was not present. She was on a business trip elsewhere in Europe. In the, one day, we went in the afternoon to, very interesting thing, we, we made a friend in Cape McClure who introduced us and took us to what turned out to be a refugee camp on the outskirts of the capital, and this is in Zodlaika. This is a refugee camp that houses about 1 million people itself. It's a small, not a small, but a pretty big town. And these are people who've fled from conflicts, political, economic, and famine, from other countries in Africa, and have found safe refuge in Malawi. Malawi is actually a very, has a very stable political history for the most part. Certainly, there have been contentious elections, but a very critical passage of power at the death of President Marika, Muthrika, a couple of years ago, led to the, to the constitutional transition of power to the vice president, who was a woman, who actually I knew. She was a friend of mine, and she actually supported, wrote a letter of support to create the Sister Cities program with Malawi when I was first establishing it 11 years ago. And she became the president. She didn't get reelected, but she was president for two years. Grace, that was not Grace Malindi, that was Janice Banda, Joyce Banda. So here's Moses Sanksen Lehia and his wife Fanny. These are the people who we met at Cape McClure two years ago. They actually live in La Longue, and so we stopped and visited with them, and they were our, they escorted us to the refugee camp. So we left the capital city and traveled to Zomba after a couple of days, and of course, this is our destination. We stopped at the Dedzepotter factory in the hills in between the two cities. I just show you these because it just shows you that there's beautiful scenery in Malawi, and it's a gorgeous place to be. And we arrived and we lodged at a place called Annie's Lodge. I never actually stayed there before. This was a little bit more upscale, but the place that we always used to stay, um, closed, so we found that this was a very suitable place to stay. Here's a couple of market scenes from the streets and the market of Zomba. You can see that shopping in Africa has a little bit of a different style than going to the mall in America. There are, of course, stores, and you can go into a store and buy drugs, and there is grocery stores in the cities, but most people shop at the open markets. So it's like having hundreds of farmers' markets everywhere you look, including along the highways. So we went into the city chambers on Monday and met the staff and the mayor. We know many of the staff members, but the elected officials all were brand new pretty much since the last election, and they, of course, have a brand new mayor. We have friends who are staff members who we've known for 10 years, and these are like the rocks of our Sister City foundation, our friendships, and we know that we can count on them, they can get things done. But we met the new mayor, Mr. Benson Bula, and he was a little reserved because he'd only been mayor for two months, and he didn't know really too much about us. But as we traveled with him during the day, he became warmer and warmer to us and to our projects. He's a very smart man. And then outside the city building, it turned out that they had a fire truck parked, a pretty old one, and it had the most interesting name, Dennis. And I thought, so, so what's that about? Like, I didn't buy a fire truck, right? So it turns out that the Dennis brothers manufactured fire trucks, lorries, and heavy equipment on order at the UK, very famous country, a company up there. But they were recently sold in 2015 or something like that, or '17, to another company, and so they do not make any more fire trucks. And I must say that these fire trucks that are owned by Malawi are pretty darn old, and they actually said that, well, you know, if we had a wherewithal, would we be able to get them a new fire truck? And I'm thinking, well, it's kind of hard to do even for us, ourselves here, but I wouldn't mind having a conversation with the fire chief about possibly bringing, carrying, or sending perhaps gently-used fire equipment that's no longer in need here in the community, perhaps to the fire people in Malawi. So we went to the Guardian Shelter, the Guardian Village and the shelters that we built at the hospital. Here's a scene at the hospital, very typical. We've seen this before in other visits. And just for your reference, this is the building that our grant, our Sister Cities project built in the years 2011 and 12. We had a $1,100, a $115,000 grant to do, to do work. We built this building, and we also did three toilet buildings at three schools. Well, the building has been, we've checked it in past visits, and so we always like to go back and check it one more time, and I was heartened to see changes that have occurred. They were painting the building, maybe because I was visiting, I don't know, but we, we looked at the building pretty carefully, and we found some great things. They've taken out the Western-style toilets and replaced them with drop toilets, which are really more common and more easy to use and maintain in Africa. So it's just a squat toilet, and, but they did have a big, big, big can full of water and a ladle that you could ladle down water into the sewer line, because this is connected to the sewers, and which feeds the area hospital. And then the clothes drying area was being used, that was good to know, and they have water tap still operating in the laundry area, and they charge a modest amount. You can use the water, you can use it for, you can fill a bucket, so many liters, and it costs you seven cents, or it's about, I don't know how many quacha there is, but $1 is worth 759 quacha, so these costs, even though they're rather expensive for the Malawians, is very cheap in our minds. Well, we also had built rocket stoves in the cooking area, and we noticed that nobody wanted to use them. They preferred to use the traditional way of cooking, which is pretty much three rocks and a campfire, and you place your cooking pot on top of the rocks, and that gives you ventilation, and that's traditional cooking in most of rural Malawi. We had, I think, only seen three gas stoves in all of the places that we ever visited in Malawi. A lot of cooking goes on outside, and so these people from the rural areas did not understand or use the rocket stoves. Well, we began visiting the schools with the council members and the mayor, and at each one, we distributed one bin full of school supplies, which you see... And at each one, we distributed one bin full of school supplies, which you see being done there. And we had purchased quite a few, 400 volumes of each of these five books, which are produced in the United States and they're bilingual for early readers. Basically, these are the Dick and Jane books of instructions in English and Tchehua. So, we think it's a good, good thing to bring them and to give them to the schools and they're highly appreciated by the educators. So, here we are talking and making the presentations, first at the Satama School, Primary School. And the Breen's were pretty much the ones who did the presentations, especially Sharon. She was very excited to be giving school supplies to these people. That's the eighth grade class at the school. Very attentive and well-disciplined children. We went to Dangapong Puma School, which is up on the hills. It was our third school that we visited. Same story. We found out that this school has no electricity. They wanted to know if we wanted to help them get electricity. We said that was kind of beyond our purview. Of course, you know, then, you know, they wanted computers, they wanted desks, they wanted chairs, they thought maybe we could build them a new, another new building for more students. We told them no, we just pretty much could bring rulers, paper, pencils, and books. They had a beautiful rock outside, on the hill, right next to the school and we said that would be a great place for a garden. And here Sharon Breen is making a presentation. Students had decorated cards addressed to the students and had asked that the cards be returned, that the Malawi students use some of the supplies that we offered them to write letters back to their school. That would be a great kind of international penpal project. I hope that we get a package delivered to their Montessori school and that they'll share it with us. And this is their eighth grade class. The eighth graders were there because they were priming for their, their big exams, which will determine whether they get to be advancing to secondary schools. If they don't pass the exam, they can't go. Well, the other educational facility that we have come to know about in our last visit was the Mubarak Complex College. This is run by a woman who's now elected to the city council. When we met her two years ago, she was not. But she's been elected into her ward, so she's an alderwoman, which I think is totally cool because she's a very competent woman, very smart. She established a women's college. In the Muslim traditions, women are very secondary, they don't have very much power, they don't have very many opportunities for education, especially if you are divorced by your husband or if you are widowed, where you have no property and pretty much no rights. So, she's fighting the fight to try to bring some education and status to women in Malawi. So, of course, we support her, we gave her a box of items too. Indeed, some of them were vocational tools that were specially desired by Scotty Dossit and Meg Miller to be delivered to them. We used our Sister Cities funds to purchase them for her. And also, we got a donation from the Close Knit Shop here, the yarn shop downtown, of yarn for their sewing and crafts classes. And there's a picture of their library and you can see that it is in great need of books. The shelves are pretty much empty, two or three volumes per topic on each shelf. So, that's something I'd like to work on in the future. And we walked around her complex. Well, we always stop at the Jeans Church in Demas. This is the church that I first visited when I went to Malawi in 2007. At that time, Pastor Don Mason and his wife headed their mission project. They helped build the church and this is our, our local Presbyterian church here on Green Street. This is a project that they've maintained for years, based on friendships that they made with graduate students at U of I who came from Malawi, went back, and they continued the friendship, resulting in the construction of a church and a school. So, we always go there, we spend Sunday morning there, we listen to their service and participate. And they always like to have, they acknowledge us, they know us. And we always bring items at the church here in Urbana once to deliver to them. So, we had quite a few items that we stuffed into our suitcases to take over. And of course, I know people at the church personally. Here's a picture of myself and the shirt that was sent to me at Christmas time by Richard Chimanea. And he was one of the original well team builders who I built a well with in Malawi when I first went there. And then there's other people and there's also a memorial to Don Mason, a highly-regarded individual whose memory is kept alive at the church. And not very far away, we spent the afternoon going to Lawanda National Wildlife Park. You can't go to Malawi without seeing some animals. And conveniently, near Zomba is a beautiful wildlife park. It was very dry, they hadn't had rain since April and we were there in the end of August. But we saw kudu, impala, elephants along the river, crocodiles, hippos, and there's a fishing eagle. Of course, we saw monkeys and other kinds of things as well. But we did take the boat ride on the river, it was very beautiful. And we also were really fortunate to see lion. Lions were recently introduced into this park and we were able to capture a few of them because our guide learned about them as he was driving around with his walkie-talkie. Somebody else in the park had seen them and told him the location. So, this pride of lions is pretty new to the park and it's kind of exciting to see them introduced to the park. And of course, elephants. And this elephant was standing just that far from our car, watching us as we drove down the dirt road toward the Muvu Lodge. Pretty cool. Well, then, we ended our trip at Cape McClure. Previously, we've gone up to the lake because, first of all, it's a beautiful lake, it's an incredible lake, it's the third-largest lake in Malawi. It's 360 miles long, which is just slightly longer or shorter than Lake Michigan, but it's narrower. But darn it, it's deeper. Lake Michigan is about 780 feet deep and this lake is 2,316 feet deep. After 900 feet, there is no more oxygen in the water and we hear that, that people have dropped their fishing nets down there and can't get them out, no doubt, because you can never get down there to get them. And, but we talked to a biologist who's really knowledgeable about the lake and he informed us that it's a fascinating lake, clear water, extremely clear water, and a very biodiverse. And I'll show you some pictures here in a few minutes about that diversity. So, we're on the lake, we're at a lodge, very nice place, it has a beautiful beach. You can see, it's pretty much like where we go to have fun at the end of our rather busy time in Malawi, this is kind of our recreation. But we do things there nonetheless. We met the school director, some teachers, and we had some other friends. We met at the Chembe Village School, it's called Cape McClure School, Primary School. And we visited their classrooms, we spent time talking to them. And we visited also a project that was done by this group in Cape McClure that we have come to know. They're trying to build a study room and library next to the school. So, we may help them with that. We might buy some cement for them to make bricks. They make their own bricks. A group from Australia met them and gave them a donation so they could buy the tin and the beams for the roof. They had begun building this building, but the rainy season came early and part of the building wall collapsed and so their project is to rebuild and get the roof on by early November when the rains begin again. Well, we had fun by going on the lake in a boat, very great thing to do, I love boats and boat rides are great. So, we spent three hours on the boat. And we went to an island that's just offshore and our captain cooked us lunch, fish caught in the lake, fried over the open campfire, sima, rice, and tomato sauce. Wonderful, wonderful lunch. We went scuba diving and these are the fish in the lake that you can see. It's incredible, these are chichlids. There are considered to be 2,000 varieties of species of these fish and they are beautiful fish, fresh water. And you can see just as clearly if you have goggles on, if you do snorkeling, which is what we did. I'm a terrible snorkeler, but I tried and I certainly enjoyed looking at this, at the fish. So, it's one place you can really take a rest when you're out there at the lake in Malawi. Of course, you can realize this is a tourist destination. So, the last evening, the sun set right behind the island we had just been visiting and we all say zokomo, thank you, as we went back to La Longue to catch our flight. We did a couple of things in La Longue, but I already told you about La Longue before we got to the airport, so I'm not going to tell you about that. But I'm going to go to the next topic. Announcing Urbana's Sister Cities Program trip to Tionville, France, November 15 through 18, 2019. We have been, we've been invited by the Mayor and City Council of our Sister City in France, Tionville, to visit them this November. Official word will come, I understand it's in the mail, but we have had email confirmation by email. Tionville City Hall looks a little bit more elegant than ours. We're going to go there and we're going to help them celebrate their 75th anniversary of their liberation from Nazi occupation at the end of World War II. And it was the American Third Army under General George Patton who came through and liberated them from Nazi occupation. So, they are deeply, what, grateful for the Americans' presence during the war. And they actually sought us out in 2014 to become a Sister City with them. They have a Sister City Group, a program called Friendship Cities, that started first after the war with German cities to try to bridge the gap and build peace between France and Germany. And now, of course, they have adopted Friendship Cities throughout the world. A lady who is a lawyer, who's now in charge of the Legal Department Studies at the University of Luxembourg, which is only 12 kilometers to the north, but she lives in Tionville, sought Mayor Pressing and myself out and asked us, while she was visiting, doing some research here at U of I and attending a workshop, whether we would please become a Sister City for them because they were planning to have the 70th year anniversary of this celebration. And they were anxious to have Americans come to have the presence of the American Mayor and also possibly veterans. Well, we were actually able to pull it together and show up on time. And when we did, five years ago, they pulled out all the stops, there was pageantry, parades, they did a huge reenactment of the battle that was for the bridge across the Mosel River as an entry into, toward Germany. And that bridge happened right in front of their city building. And we heard fascinating stories and we participated in wreath flings and parties and we danced to music of Henry Miller and Tommy Dorsey and it just was a great thing and we had good food also. So, I expect the very same thing will happen this year. And those of you aldermen who are interested in traveling, there's time to think about it. We have infirmed up the list of people who will come. Some people have expressed an interest and I would encourage you to think about it seriously. Anybody here? And finally, the last thing I want to mention is that, yes, Saturday, I was in Chicago attending the Illinois Municipal League Meeting. And our Illinois Sister Cities Association has the, has been invited to use the final banquet and award ceremony to award Sister Cities nominations in the state. And because I was the committee chairman this year, I went up there and I made the awards for the Sister City Association of Illinois. This is our table, that was a reserved table for those people who are in our committee and who have been award recipients. And there were about 800 Mayors, Aldermen, and municipal staff members attending this conference. So, we had very high recognition in the very level of municipal government that's important to maintain good Sister City relationships. The two award winners this year, Sister City of the Year is Milstat, Illinois, a town of 2,300 people, small but mighty. They had an excellent program. Their application showed the strength of their and the depth of their program and their community. And they have a German Sister City. And I guess part of the success of it is that many, many of the people who live in Milstat actually migrated from this area of Germany to America and have settled there and their families still live there today. And the Sister Cities Champion of Youth Award highlights a city in Illinois that has the most robust youth exchange program. And we found that it was Highland Park, Illinois, in the Western suburbs of Chicago, who's, not only are they winners here at the state level, but they have been awarded recognition in the National Sister Cities International Competition as well. Highly deserving. So, I appreciate your taking time to listen to me yabber on about Sister Cities Program. I think it's something that brings credit to our community, that we've had a robust program all these years. We are recognized in several different countries in the globe as being helpful and attentive to their communities and their needs. And I encourage anybody here to just become interested in Sister City because it expands your knowledge of the world and it does bring friendship on a global level, which is, I think, at this time in our lives, in our communities, in our nation, is a goal truly worthy of achieving. So, that's my presentation and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Dennis. All right, the second to the last item on our agenda is public input. I have two people who do not wish to address the committee tonight and one person who does. I'll go ahead and read the ones who choose not to address. Reverend Dr. Evelyn Bishop Underwood wishes to say that the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem, they are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issue. We also have Eldress Melinda Carr, who has continued concerns about Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. And finally, we have Roland Kim. Would you like to come up, Mr. Kim? Thank you.
And after that, actually, I forgot that I have a presentation for the Mayor.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hi, this should be pretty short.
Please sit down in front of the, thank you.
Okay. So, basically, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm part of UIUC Student Government and I'm pretty sure there have been other liaisons before, so I'm the liaison this year. I've already given some of my contact information to some of y'all, but if y'all need, if y'all need like my contact information, I'll feel free to share it. My job, as many of y'all know, is just to go to these meetings, you know, see what's related to the university and make sure that we have a positive relationship with y'all. So, I'm looking forward to the year and attending the meetings.
Thank you very much. Diane?
I think we look forward to working with you and UIUC Student Government as we get geared up for the census count next spring, making sure that students are counted. Where they live here in Urbana is incredibly important, so we'll be, we'll be contacting you to help with that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't believe there's anybody else in the audience, so with that, we'll move on to the next. Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis.
Yeah, I didn't, I forgot there was like one other element that I wanted to finish. So, it's a presentation of the Mayor. So, I'll just stand up and what I'm going to present is a gift from So I'll just stand up and what I'm going to present is a gift from the mayor of Malawi to our mayor and, which is in this package. And I'm going to give the mayor a copy of the book, which is the 10-year anniversary of our Sister City program, so that the mayor's office can have a copy of this.
Dennis, is this from the mayor of Zomba?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay.
This is from the mayor of Zomba.
Not the mayor of Malawi.
Of, not of all Malawi, can't be the president of Malawi, but the mayor of Zomba then. In the spoke, I'm correcting myself.
I was just confused from there.
Oh, it's one of the hand cards. Oh, wow. Nice.
It's, it looks like it's a hand carved map of Malawi itself in a rather decorative style.
I'll add it to the collection in my office.
Ongoing collection of items from, from Zomba.
All right. With that, the last item on the agenda is a staff report. Does any staff have a report? They're all shaking their heads. With that, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.